Okay. All right, I'll call the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one remote meeting for the West Richland City Council order at six P M. And before we ask Stephanie to call the roll, I'll have her read our virtual meeting ground rules and then continue with roll calling.
All right, thank you. Please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you have joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video. And there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant I D. Please call in with that I D as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a designated comment period. When the mayor asks for public comments, if you raise your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. All right, roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
Gail Brown.
Here.
Rich Buell.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Thank you. With that, I'll ask Councilmember Moran to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening, but if you give Stephanie just a little time to mute everyone. And then we'll turn it over to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justice for all.
There we go. Perfect. Got it. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Moran. Appreciate it. All right, council, with that, I have the agenda before you. I have motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that motion.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, council. Presentations this evening, we have Alicia as well as Tanya from A W C to present Councilmember Brown with the A W C Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tanya this evening. Or excuse me, let's see who's going to kick it off.
I'll go ahead and kick it off.
There you go. You moved on my screen. We're over here and now you're over here. Alicia, thanks for coming. Tanya, thank you this evening for joining us.
Well, I think that thank you is all of on all of ours with A W C. My name's Alicia Seagres Martinelli. I'm the interim C E O with A W C. And I just want to thank you, Mayor Gary, and members of the West Richland Council for inviting us here today to bestow this recognition on Councilmember Gail Brown. I'd be for doing so. I just want to share a little bit about A W C. I know that many of you are familiar with our us and our trainings. We see that from the number of council here on the screen that have their C M L and a few of you with your advanced C M L. But you know, we serve the council and cities throughout the state. And our mission is to support our members through advocacy, education, and services. And we're proud to be doing that for over ninety years. So soon you're getting here a little bit more about the education program from Tanya. But I do want to acknowledge that the the city is also a member of some of our member pooling programs as well. Notably, the Workers Comp Retro Program, which works on your behalf to keep employees safe and bringing them home every night. And then the Employee Benefit Trust with benefits. I do want to highlight a way that you can get involved if you are so inclined. We currently have a number of opportunities for joining a council, a advisory committee with A W C or a statewide advisory committee. There's lots of opportunities listed currently on our website and in our weekly newsletter, City Voice, that comes out every Wednesday. We are currently in the midst of a of a large recruitment. So if you were interested in getting more involved, I would encourage you to take a look. Always feel free to contact Kanye or myself for more information. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tanya, who's going to share a little bit about the history of the certificate of municipal leadership program. Tanya is our Member Services Director.
Thank you, Alicia. Thank you again, everyone, for having us. We very much appreciate the time. I want to just tell you a little bit about the certificate for municipal leadership program. So A W C is C M L program. We call it C M L for short. Recognizes mayors and council members for accomplishing training in a variety of competency areas and has been around since nineteen ninety-seven. So when you attend an A W C workshop or conference or on demand training that offers C M L credit, you you'll see that on our A W C offerings, our trainings. I see some of you nodding your heads. Many of you have attended our trainings and thank you so much for doing that and continuing your education. I see. Thank you, Kate. We we very much appreciate that. And these trainings are automatically tracked for you. You don't have to do do anything. It's just part of the the program for you to do that. So when you go to an A W C event and you see C M L in there, we track it and take care of that. You can even check your progress online to see how you're doing. So in the core program, it takes thirty credits in a variety of competency areas. And so there are many categories and I'll just briefly cover them. And again, if you go to was cities dot org and you check out our C M L program, you can get a lot more detail there. But the core requirements involve roles, responsibilities, and legal requirements. There's training on public sector resource management, community planning and development, and effective local leadership. And in beginning in January, twenty twenty-two, we're also going to be adding and adding a diversity, equity, and inclusion category to this as well. So it's a very robust, comprehensive training that we offer our elected officials throughout the year, whether it's in person or on demand training. But tonight, we're here to celebrate Councilmember Brown and her Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership. So so she's gone above and beyond. So the core is thirty credits. And then in addition to that, to achieve the Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership, you take another thirty credits and also do a community service project. And so there's a lot more involved in that advanced C M L. And so I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Brown for taking the time to really invest in continuing your education and sharing with your community all that you're learning and taking back to West Richland. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Alicia to present the award, virtually, of course.
Yes, and I'd so that so virtual presentation without further delay. On Councilmember Brown, you have a certificate and a lapel pen. On behalf of the A W C Board of Directors, we extend our sincere congratulations to you and congratulate you, applaud you for your dedication to continuing your municipal education.
Thank you so much, and thank you for taking the time to come and bring that to me.
Gail, do you have other remarks for this evening?
Am I muted?
No, you're fine.
Okay. I know I just wanted to, well, actually, Erin, I think the one that was holding me up was the budget one. So and I've been on their finance committee forever. So that was probably probably should have took on that one earlier. But no, I enjoyed it. And with COVID and stuff, we have the time. These Zoom meetings are excellent for getting training in. So or you are. I like it. I did all the legislative things that we wouldn't be able to do before. So thank you for coming and doing this for me.
Very good. Thanks, Gail. Congratulations. Alicia, Tanya, thank you again so much for joining us this evening. And feel free to stick around and watch your virtual meetings. We've got a lot of cool news tonight. And you'll see a lot of a lot of faces that are from our Benton R E A. So exciting news coming down the pike. So if you want to hang tight, more than welcome. Okay, thank you. With that, council, I'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda this evening, which is approved payment of the bills. Prove the minutes of the regular and workshop meetings of October fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Resolution forty-seven twenty-one declaring miscellaneous public works vehicles and equipment as surplus. Resolution forty-eight twenty-one amending a frontage improvement waiver with Cedar Ridge Development. And a resolution fifty-one twenty-one authorizing the mayor to execute distribution agreement dispersment agreement, excuse me, for the use of curb funds for cooperative way. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this consent agenda this evening? If so, please raise your virtual hand. The city clerk will unmute you. You can address the consent agenda or star nine by virtual phone. We've got a lot of participants this evening, so I'm going to bounce back and forth from my screens. And Stephanie, I do not see any hands up. Do you?
I do not see anyone with their hands up.
All right, very good. So council, may I have motion to approve the consent agenda this evening, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion and a second. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, council. We're going to go ahead and move on to our first opportunity for citizen public comment this evening on anything that's not related to agenda items. If you'd like to wish to provide comment to council, please go ahead and raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone and clerk will recognize you and unmute you and you can make comments. And I see we have got May Hayes's hand up. We'll we'll start with May. Stephanie, if you would, please unmute Ms. Hayes.
I have requested to unmute. May, you just seem to, there you go.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the floor is yours, May. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm here once again. We have the Veterans Day Parade happening November sixth. And so I'm here to invite all the council people, mayor, council people to be part of that. Be part of our dignitaries in it. It's going to be a very exciting year, having a year off and doing a virtual parade. Kind of took a toll, I think, on everyone. And so everybody, we have tons of applications already. Everybody's excited. Get back out and honor our veterans. So that's happening. And with the parade, usually after that, we do, I don't know if you guys can see the we do the Combat Vets International Chili Feed right after the parade. And then after that, it's the big day to give away our motorcycle raffle that we do with Combat Vets and the West Richland Chamber of Commerce. So I invite you all to come down, be part of that. And the other thing I have to present to you, and I'll drop off at the city tomorrow, is each year we apply as a chamber representing the city for the regional site designation for from the Department of Veteran Affairs in Washington, D.C. So we've done that again. This is our fourteenth year doing that. We got accepted again. And what's really exciting is we're one parade, one of three parades in the whole state of Washington that has this award that we're given, and we're the only one east of the mountain. So I think we should be very proud of that. And so I have the award. I'll drop it off tomorrow at the at the city. And it's just the Veterans Day National National Committee hereby designates West Richland, Washington as a regional site for the Veterans Day Parade twenty twenty-one. So I think it's very exciting for us. It's exciting for us to put on the chamber to put on this parade. And we have people that come from all over the region. You know, up to Moses Lake Spokane, we've had people come down into Oregon. And so I just really appreciate the city's participation in this parade and what we're able to do to stand back and honor our veterans. So thank you, guys, for being part of it and for supporting the chamber with our event.
Okay. Thank you, May. Much appreciated. And yes, it is. It is a great community event, a lot of great flows, good turnout. Most of the time, I think I've only, I think we've only been rained out once in the last number of years. So hopefully we'll have another another good, good weather day. I had Salvador from the governor's office contact me asking if we had any events coming up. And and I turned it over to Eric Mendenhall, and he fired back, letting them know that we had our Veterans Day Parade, one that was one of three recognized in the state. So I haven't heard if there's anything more of that. But did you hear from the governor's office at all?
Did I? I did not.
Okay.
I did not.
All right, very good. The buzz was he was trying to find someplace to light during the Veterans Day. So maybe it's too far to travel over here. I don't know. So.
Yeah. Well, thanks for doing that, though.
Yeah, you bet. We do everything we can to get to get the chamber recognized for everything you do for us. It's much appreciated. So thank you, May, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so is Stephanie, do you see anyone else? I'll flip screen.
I do not.
I don't see anyone else either. All right. Well, we'll go ahead and move on then to ordinances, resolution, motions, and public hearings. And item eight, A and B are a public hearing on a frontage improvement waiver. And the the resolution adopting it, and I'll let Public Works Director, Mr. Slade, present staff report this evening. Roscoe.
Thank you, Mayor. So council, what we have before you is a petition for a frontage waiver improvement to Keene Road. This has to do with Benton R E A's curb cooperative way project. The council is required to adopt a resolution fixing a time when a public hearing for the front improvement waiver petition will be heard and determined. Said time should not be more than ninety days nor less than twenty-one days after the passage of the resolution. In your packet was attached, resolution twenty-six twenty-one establishes Tuesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. City council meeting is the time when the public hearing will occur on said petition. At the October nineteenth, two thousand one city council meeting, council will take public comment on the issue and then determine if a frontage improvement waiver will or will not be granted. If the frontage improvement waiver is approved, council may place conditions on the waiver. Per West Richland Municipal Code, notices were mailed out to the budding property owners within six hundred feet of subject property. The subject property was posted and notices were posted in several locations around the city as required. The West Richland Community Development Director on behalf of Benton R E Association has petitioned the city council for a frontage improvement waiver for specific improvements to Keene Road associated with Benton R E A's associations curb cooperative way project. That petition is in your packet. It's dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Per West Richland Municipal Code, section twelve oh four oh six oh. A waiver from the application of any provision of this chapter may be granted by the city council by resolution with or without condition upon the findings that the waiver from the terms or requirements of this chapter will in no way be detrimental to the best interest of the city, will not be contrary to its intent or to the public interest, safety, health, and welfare. And where due special conditions or exceptional characteristics of the subject property, a little enforcement of this chapter would result in practical impractical difficulties or unnecessary hardships. Staff has reviewed the request petition and staff's recommending that council grant Benton R E A a fringe improvement waiver for the following required improvements to Keene Road associated with the curb walkaway project. Number one, curb gutter eighty-eight handicap ramps and sidewalks along the parcels front Keene Road frontage shall not be required. Widening of the Keene Road from its pre-existing edge to the new curb line shall only be required to accommodate Seth, a center left turn lane along the frontage of Lot Five, Record of Survey fifty-four ninety-six, and associated pavement tapers. Free installation L E D streetlights shall only be required at the two intersections of Keene Road and Cooperative Way and Keene Road in the secondary access to Lot Five, Record of Survey fifty-four ninety-six, which is a total of four L E D streetlights required at each intersection. And for milling and asphalt pavement overlay, a Keene Road to the center line shall not be required. Again, these are the findings that staff believes meet the conditions of West Richland, section twelve oh four oh six oh.
Okay, thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate it. With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing six twenty P M. If you'd like to provide comments, please raise your hand or star nine on the phone and city clerk will unmute you. And if you'd state your name and city of residence for the record, you can provide your comments. And I see nobody on my page one. Uh, but I do. Okay, I see we have Mike Bradshaw has his hand up. Stephanie, would you please unmute Mr. Bradshaw?
There he is.
Yeah, can you hear me okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. We have you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, fantastic. So my name's Mike Bradshaw. I live in the city of West Richland at six nine zero zero Argo Street. And obviously, I favor the the process as to what we're doing here here with regards to the frontage improvement. And and the rest of the items that you'll be looking at tonight. I just wanted to express Benton R E A's profound appreciation and our working relationship with the city of West Richland. A lot of the faces you see on the screen tonight, as I glance through, I've got a number of trustees and a number of employees all interested in in the process that you're going to implement tonight and and are on tonight and in support of the city and and your process. And once again, I just want to express the good working relationship that we have with the you folks at the city. And look forward, if we all this comes together, look forward to someday soon being the next door neighbor to the West Richland Police Department. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Stephanie, do you see anyone else? I do not.
I just want to double check. I did not receive any public comments written via email or mail prior to the public hearing. Stephanie, did you receive any as the clerk?
I did not, no.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
You stole my thunder there, Roscoe. That was going to be what I was going to ask her next. It's okay. It's all good. So no comments received by Mr. Slade or clerk Stephanie. And I do not see any more hands up. With that, I will close the public hearing at six twenty-three. And then we have resolution forty-nine twenty-one. Frontage improvement waiver, Lot Five. Fifty-four ninety-six. Do I have a motion, council? Gail, will you have your hand up?
I'll make the motion for discussion.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Move to for the R E A's waiver on fifty twenty-one or whatever, forty-eight, forty-nine. I don't know.
I move to pass resolution forty-nine. Granting a frontage improvement waiver for the frontage improvements to Keene Road per Richland Municipal Code twelve oh four oh for Benton Royal Electric Associations curb cooperative way project. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you, Councilman Bloom, for pulling that one out there. You found it. Perfect. Okay, so motion and second, Gail, you have your hand up, which?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions. Now, it looks like the entrance, maybe I got this wrong, but the interest is going kind of on that curve there? Or is it up further? It looks like it's on the curve.
Around the the access point to Benton R E A's future headquarters will be off the cooperative way. And that access there that serves as the secondary access to the police station will serve as a secondary access to Benton R E A's property. But that will not be the primary, but we will be improving that intersection with a left turn there.
Okay, because that's what I was going to ask. I don't know when this is going to be built out to be a three, four lane or whatever it's going to be. So I was just without the left turn lane.
Yeah, so Councilmember Brown, we are in the process. We budgeted in the twenty-one twenty-two budget to do the design of widening Keene Road from four lanes from bombing range all the way to S R two two four. So we're doing that in house. We're expecting a call for federal projects next spring, summer, and we're hoping to have that design most of the way complete. So that'll be a competitive project that would complete Keene Road and all the improvements all the way through there. This frontage waiver is consistent with what we did previously with the Richland School District's T L A C facility, I believe, a couple of years ago. So.
The only thing I was, I didn't know how many trucks and stuff they're going to come in and out of there. They're a little bit harder to see or, well, I guess they'd be easier to see, but people might not be paying attention if there's a lot of that going in there. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you, yes. And I already know the answer, but I'm asking it just so that it's out there. With this, it does mean that once the road is widened, that there is not a waiver for any improvement afterwards, correct?
I I'm sorry, Kate.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I think I cut out on my end. I didn't hear the whole question. Your whole answer.
Oh, yeah, sorry. What I'm asking is, this does not mean that in the future, we are not going to require any improvement on this. This is just because the widening is going to happen. We don't want them to have to improve it and then have it be destroyed with the widening of the street, correct?
That's correct. If they go and do these kind of improvements now, when we widen the road, it would be a throwaway, very similar to the reason why we didn't require T L A C to do it. So in the future, if we're successful in getting a federal or state grant to improve it, we'll finish off across the frontage of all the frontage on Keene Road, including this six hundred foot section across Benton R E A's property there.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Anyone else, council member? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, council. Moving on to items eight, C and D are a public hearing on a second amendment to the franchise agreement between the city and Benton R E A. And the ordinance adopting it as well. We'll ask Roscoe to present staff report again this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Since it's deals with a franchise agreement, we do have public comments, public hearing to follow. If you recall, Benton R E A currently enjoys a twenty-five year franchise agreement that was granted to them in March of twenty fifteen with ordinance nine dash fifteen. Amendment one occurred in April of twenty eighteen. And it amended section four point two. This deals with, there's an R C Ws that allows the city to get an electric business. And the way the language is in the franchise agreement, there wasn't any advance notice that the city needed to provide Benton R E A. And so back in twenty eighteen, we did amendment one that put in there that the city needed to provide Benton R E A fifteen years advance notice if we were going to get into the electrical business. So that's where we stand today. Benton R E A is looking to make a substantial investment in West Richland with their headquarters as part of the purchase of Lot Five. Record of Survey fifty-four ninety-six, which is about eighteen acres in the backside of the raceway with frontage, about six hundred foot of frontage on Keene Road. And so we looked at this and what would the request was to look at amending a couple of sections of the franchise agreement. And I'll kind of walk through them. The first one looks at section two point one. And it amends the term of the franchise agreement from twenty-five years to thirty years. The existing franchise agreement has eighteen and a half years left. So this would essentially restart that clock and give them a fresh thirty, starting January first of twenty twenty-two. It would amend section four point two, and this has to do with a notice period, and it reduces it from fifteen years to ten years. But it has a caveat in there. And again, it has to do with the significant investment that Benton R E A has made in the past and will be making shortly in a new headquarters facility and some other improvements that basically we wouldn't enact that ten year notice before January first of twenty forty-seven. So it it allows Benton R E A the full enjoyment of the thirty year term is essentially what that does. And then lastly, again. And then lastly, uh, again, uh, Mr. Bradshaw expressed how uh, the staffs of Benton REA and the city work very closely. And both were uh, adamant that there may be something that comes up in the future. That, you know, we wanted to add language and so about good faith effort in negotiating. The circumstances change, you know, whether it's a twenty year franchise, ten year, thirty year, things change. And so section twenty one was a mutual thing that both staff asked, I think it came up at council when we were initially discussing this. That basically if circumstances change, both the city and Benton REA agreed to engage in good faith negotiations. To agree on amendments to the franchise to address changed circumstances, so doesn't really commit anything, it just sets out the tone of how. City staff and Benton REA work together, uh, cooperative and collaborative with these type of things. Um, and then section twenty five point two, again, uh, the effective date of the franchise would. Uh, reset to January first of twenty twenty two, and that's when the thirty year term uh, would start. Uh, this amendment has been reviewed by the city attorney and also has been reviewed by Benton REA's uh, legal counsel.
Thank you, Roscoe, and with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at six thirty one, if anyone would like to provide comments, please raise your hand. Uh, or star nine, and the city clerk will unmute you, you can state your name and city of residence for the record to provide your comments. And looking at my second screen. I do not see any hands up, Stephanie, would you confirm that for me, please?
I also do not see anyone.
That will go ahead and close the public hearing at six thirty two. And ordinance twenty seven twenty one amending amendment number two to Benton REA's franchise agreement through ordinance nineteen fifteen. Uh, we have a motion, please?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign and execute ordinance twenty seven dash two one amendment number two. Amending section two point one, four point two, twenty one and twenty five point two of Benton Rural Electric Association's franchise agreement. Ordinance zero nine dash one five.
Motion and a second, uh, council, do you have any uh, questions of Roscoe? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, I see your hand up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, but since we have so many trustees. And other senior uh, members of Benton REA, I just want to express that. I deeply appreciate the commitment that Benton REA is making to West Richland. I support this change, look forward to working with Benton REA as a member of council for years to come. And I'm sure it's gonna continue long after I leave council, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, anyone else? I see no one. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, counsel. Moving on to item. Eight E is a resolution amending the city's salary schedule. To include an operation, operator in training position in the city sewers department. And uh, we have our HR, human resource manager, Selena Smithers here to present her staff report this evening, Selena.
Hey, good evening, counsel. Um, so I am here to talk about a position, but I'd just like to start out that it's not a new position, it does not increase the FTE count. And it's not a budget change. We were slated to hire a maintenance one in the sewer department. But some of the research that has come out lately has really shown that um, wastewater treatment plants and water departments are short on operators. We have some people that are going to retire in Washington State, and we don't have people trained to replace um, the operators. So what we thought about doing was converting a maintenance one position into an operator in training. So that way we're hiring somebody, they might only have a basic skill set today, but it's under the intention. That they uh, go through the process to get the training, the certificates, and the time in the plant to become an operator. So it sort of just changes the type of person that we hire from the get-go. And it puts them on a path to get their certification within three to five years, so it's a reasonable amount of time. So we are asking that uh, council approve to change the salary schedule, and we're just converting a maintenance one position to an operator in training position.
Thank you, Selena, if there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to this agenda item this evening, please raise your virtual hand. Clerk will unmute you, and you could uh, please name your city of residence for the record, provide comment. And I see no one either screen, Stephanie, do you this evening?
I do not.
Very good, counsel, uh, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass resolution five zero dash two one, amending the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two salary schedule.
A second?
Um, motion by Mayor Pro Tim Brink, Mr. Counselor Smart, second. Comments, questions of Stephanie this evening, counsel? Excuse me, uh, Selena. Two S's, they're right next to each other in the emails too, I always, I forget, they both get them. I see, Councilmember Brown, you have your hand.
Okay, so the certificate and everything, how, about how long does that take them to get, I'm guessing this is um, online or something?
It's actually a step process, and yes, a lot of the training can be done through apps on the phone. Uh, through books and through online, and it's about three certifications they have to get to become an operator, and the entire process will be three to five years.
Okay, and are we paying for that?
We do pay for that, we do pay for their certifications and their training, uh, that is something we have always done to get people um, promoted into positions. This one's just a little different because we expect that they're going to be promoted and move up from the beginning, so they're sort of in the fast track.
And so do we get to keep them, is there gonna be anything that says, okay, you got your certificate we paid for for five years, so you gotta give us a couple of years here or something?
No, no, not with this.
This happens sometimes with our police department as well.
Yes, if we have very expensive training, um, we do do that, for instance, when we uh, get employees to get their CDL, that's about five thousand dollars. It's a very extensive program, we do stipulate that they stay here five years. Um, but these are really nominal, they're they're a hundred to three hundred dollars each to get these cert certifications.
Councilmember Brown, the the biggest challenge is they need to have uh, actual experience at a treatment plant.
Um, so we're we're doing that one now.
Yeah, and there's not a trade school or a community college or a tech place. To send people to to be a wastewater treatment plant operator. You can be an HVAC tech, you can be a carpenter, you know, this is uh, an area that uh, the mayor and I. Up and went actually to IACC conference uh, pre-COVID. Uh, was a big presentation on uh, water and wastewater operators in the state of Washington that. I don't remember if it was the next, I think it was the next ten years, so we're already three years into it. That they expected half of the operators to age out or retire. Um, and with no uh, pathway, either through high school tech. Or colleges that offered that, and so this is a program uh, that actually, we kind of. What is Selena, Richland, City of Richland has a similar program that uh, having lunch with the public works director from Richland. Uh, they did this, they they have this same program that this is a way that they can. Train and uh, get operators uh, through the process. Uh, Richland, I asked Richland, how many do you lose? And they they maintain the majority of them, but uh, there's there's that potential that they could um, do it. But trying to find an operator out there, they just don't exist, and so we're gonna homegrown here and uh. Set it up, so it's a good program, Selena put a lot of work into it, and I appreciate it.
And we won't be bringing any of our test stuff back, we're just gonna keep testing that over the health department.
We we don't use the health department, we've had issues uh, with the testing, and so we use a private lab. Uh, at this point, um, but yeah, the the lab doesn't exist down there anymore.
Yeah, I knew it tore it out, but I thought you went back over the health department.
Uh, we did, but then had to uh, shake the service to a private, we had some issues with the testing there.
Counselor Smart?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, counsel, um, Gail, you 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 had the exact question I had, I'm going to expand on a little bit. Uh, you know, so there's no way that we're gonna have a way to guarantee that this training stays. Um, operators are in are in tight supply. How much, and and but the cost of training isn't that much evidently, how much staff time? Above and beyond normal operations is estimated to be required to work this person through the training program, is it significant or insignificant? Um, anything different?
It's really the typical things that you would normally do in the department anyway. So this is the type of training that we would already expect the operators to give the maintenance one and maintenance two workers. It's just that when we typically hire somebody now, there's no promise for them. We're hiring somebody that has the aptitude of a maintenance one, and that's what we're looking for at the time, we have a position, we're trying to fill that position. Now, we're trying to get the buy-in from people to uh, stick with us. They're kind of on a fast track for promotion, uh, we're hoping we'll get somebody with a better attitude and a higher aptitude, knowing that we can promise this upfront. But part of this is that they are required to have the time in the department, and they're required to be doing the things an operator would do. Um, a lot of that just does require oversight, but we're so small and we've really become the training ground anyway. That all of our, all of our supervisors are accustomed to this.
I'm sorry, last part, all of them are what?
All of our supervisors are accustomed to this, they really do spend a lot of time training.
Yeah. So uh, so so will we be having a second training anytime soon? I mean, I guess I'm a little concerned if they're so rare. Uh, and this person who gets trained bails out and goes to work for somebody else. Are we stuck, are we gonna have a rotational program, or we continue to bring on trainees? Um, and then, and I I'll just leave that as an open ques, I don't, you don't have to answer that necessarily right now, but I'm just suggesting that we consider it. Um, and then the other thing that. It's funny when Roscoe said there's no, you know, training school for this, I can understand they'd have a hard time marketing probably, but um. But but really, it's it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it is a vital part of our city operation. And same with, you know, every other city that operates a waste disposal of sewage system, so. Uh, I don't, you know, we are, we've gotten awards with our water treatment plant, right, we we are good at this. Um, maybe we should start a school. You know, right, instead of fearing that our trainees leave. Maybe we should be inviting trainees to come and and watch our stellar operations here in West Richland.
There would probably be more money in that.
Yeah, yeah, well, all right, that's all I had, I just wanted to reiterate what Gail's concern was, is that, you know, we we trained this person and they they bail out on us. But hopefully that won't happen, and hopefully we've got a good career path lined up for somebody who's gonna be valuable to us.
And and John, usually, you know, it it takes them, Selena, was it five, is it five years on that track to get to our?
If they were stellar and we had no issues and they just met every timeline, it could be up to three, but realistically, it's probably five.
Eight, five, and and John, what I typically see is employees that hit the five year mark, they get that extra year, or extra year, extra week of vacation.
Oh, yeah.
And and usually people aren't leaving to go back to two weeks of vacation once they've been up to three, so. Uh, Richland's been very successful with it, so we thought we'd give it a try and see how it works. Again, the investment's pretty small, and hopefully we can homegrown some operators.
That's all, thank you, Councilmember Brandon?
Thank you, uh, John, you actually got to one of my points before I got a chance to talk about it, I was just going to mention that it would be great if we could. Um, almost use this as a way where we could use our plant as a training for others because. I mean, ours is the best. Um, but I also wanted to ask, is there something that is written down that? Is a guarantee, is it written as a guarantee that if anybody is hired onto this position that within? This very specific period of time, you will be given this training, and if you pass all of these particular points that you will be.
Yeah. It's actually written in the job description, which as soon as they start, they are signing off on that, that they understand it. But it's written down stating that within a certain amount of time of being qualified to take the test, that they take the test. Um, because there are other things there that the state requires before they do take the test, and then once they pass the test. Then they're bumped up to the next level, and then their time and training starts again to get to that second level.
Gotcha, so are you talking specifically about the section that says certifications and licenses, or is there a separate section?
It's there, and then right underneath that, um, it talks about steps for promotions, yes.
Okay, yeah, cuz I was just, I was looking through that earlier, and I just, something somebody else had said made me wonder. Is this something where it can be taken as? We are contractually obliging ourselves to. Have these twelve months where they can get the CDL. And that within these six months, they have the ability to get this operator in training group one. And within this one year, group two, and within this one year, the plant operator two, is is this contractually then stating that?
Yes, this is the same as uh, when they sign a job description that we are providing to them all the necessary um, equipment. And time and training and ability to do their job successfully. Um, there could be some things like COVID that bar them from doing that, but it would be outside of our control. Um, same as the the employee may have a surgery and be on family medical leave, and that might be out of their control. So there are things that, you know, we be, we are reasonable with employees, but yes, we do need to stick by the the timeframe.
Is there anything protecting us to where if we did have something that would cause it to where we are not able to provide? Within that period of time, the ability for them to get the certification or the CDL uh, license?
Um, typically, when we have issues like that now, and a lot of this is just uh, conversations we have with employees about promotional opportunities. We do a very good job of really clearly communicating with the employee all year long, and. For instance, we have had some people that have been held back a little bit due to COVID, they just weren't able to take the certifications that they needed. Um, honestly, employees are very good, as long as you're direct and honest and uh, and that they trust that you will follow through when you can.
Um, right.
But we really do do our best to hold to that obligation.
Absolutely, no, and I absolutely agree, I I know that we do, I'm just wanting to make sure that we are legally protecting ourselves. So that in the case where we could have somebody that would decide, oh, well, I wasn't given this much time. That they wouldn't have the ability to come back and say, hey, I was not given this amount of time, so therefore, I'm just making sure that legally we are protected. And that also the employee is protected, that's all.
Kate, Kate, as we go through, as we go through the process, if we have somebody that's struggling a little bit, we will go ahead and pull them in. We'll have the conversation, we'll document it, we'll give the expectation of what we're asking of them. We will continually monitor the situation, so we're very good at making documentation of such. Make sure they're compliant with our expectations and what their obligation was. And therefore, that would make sure that if any actions are necessary to be taken, the city's liabilities would be minimized. And very well documented to support our case, if that's the question I believe you asked.
Yes, I was just checking to make sure that we are covering our butts legally, that's all, thank you.
Okay, you bet, thank you, Gail, did you have your hand back up?
Yeah, uh, Roscoe, did you have somebody in mind for this, I know you got a couple uh, guys that have been down there for that. Or is this gonna go out too open?
Was this Coleman, Selena?
Uh, no, this will actually go out um, to all employees. Internal candidates that may be interested.
Okay, but you are gonna put it out?
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good, so you know the council members' hands up, so with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you, counsel. And we're gonna go ahead and uh, we have no unfinished business this evening or any new business. This is the time for citizen public comment, so. Uh, I would like to open up the uh, comment session to anybody who would like to address counsel. Uh, if you please raise your virtual hand, and we'll have Stephanie uh, city clerk call you and unmute you. And then uh, if you please give your name and residence for the record, it'd be appreciated, you can address counsel. Okay, we've got all these REA people here, and I would just assume that somebody would wanna say hi. Okay. I don't see any more hands up, Stephanie, do you?
I don't see any hands.
Okay, very good, so with that, whoops, I got one, I got, yeah, there's there's a double-hander.
All right.
Mr. Free Ponds, how you doing?
Well, I'm, since you begged, I'll make the free comment.
Okay, and then everybody else is going to follow along. Okay, so you guys figure out where your virtual hand is. Love to hear from you. Like, talk to our partners.
Well, I, I'd just like to comment that over the years that I've been on the Board of Benton REA, we've always had a very, uh, a good relationship with West Richland and the city council. And I, um, look forward to continuing that relationship and we're excited about our new, uh, planning of additional facilities in your area. And the, and the race the other day, the other weekend was great.
Well, you guys will be right on the, uh, right on the back stretch there, so you can, you got your little stadium seating set up. You'd be good to go.
We, we used to sit on the railroad tracks when I was a kid.
Oh, boy. Yeah, I think we all been up there, right, Gail?
Yeah, keep seats.
Anyway, thank, thank you for the opportunity.
You know, we, we certainly look forward to the partnership with Benton REA. It's been, it's, it's going to be a great opportunity for, for all of our citizens and, and, you know, providing the, the services that you do. It's going to save you a lot of windshield time. We're excited about the, the daytime jobs and we're excited about the, the point of delivery for, for the retail sales tax base. And, you know, so it's a win-win all the way around and it, it's exciting. We're looking forward to it. So if there's anyone else?
It's Mr. Berglin.
This, where's, what, what screen is he on? Oh, there he is. Troy?
Yeah, hi. I took, I'm going to take advantage of it as well and I'm going to expand my thanks a little bit. So obviously, we enjoy a phenomenal partnership with the city council and city staff and work very closely with the number of the staff members on this call. But even May was presenting early about the Veterans Day Parade and we have hogs and dogs and stuff. And Ben in the Police Department, I was just meeting with Dwayne in the Police Department earlier today on traffic control for the Vets Day Parade. So your, your guys' staff is just phenomenal in a lot of different areas to work with and just can't speak highly enough about our partnership and how, how good it is to work with them. Everybody probably except Eric Mendon. No, I'm just kidding. No, just really phenomenal partnership that we couldn't be more pleased with and glad to be working with you guys for many years in the future.
Thanks, Troy. You know, and you talked to other things that are just related to REA and, and the city. We're also very appreciative of Benton REA and the, the Troy and the, the lobbyist, Pat Dunn. For the assistance between, you know, us working together as partners for the last year and a half or almost two, probably, over Olympia to make this SR two twenty-four deal happen. Uh, that's going to improve our transportation corridor through Van Geest. So I wanted to make sure that I thank all the trustees that are here tonight and for their support in partnering with the city on, in regards to that. It's certainly beneficial. A little city like us, we don't have the deep pockets like some of our sister cities that we can afford our own lobbyists. And we certainly appreciate your assistance with letting us share Pat and his team. Uh, because it certainly makes a big difference when you have people in Olympia that know there's another door besides the front door. So it's a, it's a plus for sure. I see Mr. Bloom, you have your hand up?
Well, I thought I would, before the REA group leaves, I'd like to just make them aware of something that they, they probably don't even recognize is happening. The Benton, uh, Benton Franklin Transit just purchased additional land at Queensgate, put in a transit center. And part of the aspects is to improve the bus service from Prosser and, and Benton City into the city. And so some of your employees might be concerned with relocation. I just wanted to let you know that things are, things will be coming along within the next year on the, on the transit center. And you actually been looking at, uh, you're doing a survey right now of transit needs for Prosser and Benton City. So, uh, we're looking to improve the service between the two, back to the Tri-Cities. And let's close proximity to West Richland, so just let you know.
All right. Thanks for that update, Richard. Okay, very good. We'll go ahead and move on to staff and council comments and reports this evening. I'll go ahead and start with Council. If you'd like to address anything, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll recognize you. Councilmember Brown?
I just had one thing and I just actually read it in the AWC, what they just brought up. On our new website, and I didn't look, but they have suggested that you have a, a dedicated emergency section. So like if Benton REA has an outage or Fourth of July when it's real dry and so they can get information when they had to, you know, detour some of this stuff down here the other day and, and so forth. Um, and I don't know if that can be added now, but it seems like it would probably be a pretty good idea. It would direct them to exactly where they need to do.
All right, we'll have Stephanie check that out.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll go ahead and roll on to Councilmember Moran.
Sorry, thank you. I was just going over my, my notes while I was listening. We did just have a Benton Franklin Economic Development District and a Benton Franklin Council of Governments District meeting on last Friday. And the big things was that for the, the Council of Governments meeting, we approved the SEDs. So we now have an approved SEDs that you can look at on their website. And the SEDs stands for the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And it's for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. And also, we have approved the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is definitely good to make sure that's approved. And that was for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, the Transportation Improvement Plan. Just wanted to let you know about that.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, break?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a general public service announcement. Everyone knows the election's coming up November second. Uh, while national elections generally draw more interest, uh, I firmly believe local elections often have the greatest impact on the day-to-day lives of, of the citizens in our city. Through zoning, building regulations, easement vacations, police services, roads, the list goes on and on. Uh, services that you use every day. So I encourage everyone in West Richland that is a registered voter to look over the information that's available and cast your vote accordingly. And if you're not a registered voter yet, you can still register. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, break. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to staff. Any staff members' comments this evening? All right. I see Mr. Slade, you got your hand up. I was going to check and see if anybody else beat you, but I guess you're the most.
Sorry, just, just two items. Uh, first one, Paradise Four, uh, that project to complete the gap down to SR two-two-four. We were set to pave, uh, by the end of this month and complete the project board in December. Uh, until we got a grading permit in, uh, for the adjacent property to move a half a million yards of material from one side of that road to the other. Uh, so I had my engineering staff give me options, uh, to look at. You know, do we move forward and complete our paved road and then have to do some type of traffic control to close it, to let those scrapers move dirt across from one side of that road to the other and potentially damage it? And ultimately, we weighed through the, through the, uh, options, contacted the, our contractor. And it happens to be the same contractor that was awarded the project to move the dirt. And so what we did is we are going to do a stop work on Paradise Four, meaning we're not going to put the final rock on it or the asphalt, so we don't take a chance of damaging it. Issue the grading permit to allow the contractor to move the dirt across the road this winter. And then we will pick up the project, put the rest of the rock down and pave that road in April. So, um, disappointed that connection's not going to be made. Uh, but at the same time, I got zero risk now of getting a brand-new road tore up trying to move that much material. And it allows the material to be moved quickly. And the best part is, is, uh, it's a no-cost change order to the city. So the contractor's not going to increase prices or anything with that. And I think it's a benefit to the budding property owner. So it was a win-win. So, uh, just maintenance guys are happy. They don't have another hill to sand or plow this winter either. So anyway, uh, so look for that in the spring. And secondly, uh, staff's been working, uh, the last several months on, uh, complete streets. If you recall, we updated our complete streets ordinance, I believe in June. Since that time, uh, we've been working with, there's eight different nominating agencies. And each one of them has a different application that you need to fill out and submit. And then those agencies then decide, uh, who they're going to nominate to TIB to see if you get a complete street, uh, grant award in November. Twenty seventeen, we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant with Futurewise giving us the nomination. The, I think the grants go up to a million dollars. And so, uh, the good news is, uh, one of the eight, uh, we found, they, they all have different processes. Some of them you just, uh, you have an application to submit. Some of them don't want anything. Others have a two-part process where you have to fill out an application. And if you're a finalist, you get to do a presentation, a forty-five-minute presentation. And, uh, so we were, we are a finalist for the Community Transportation Association. So our engineering staff will be doing a presentation tomorrow to see if we earn that nomination to TIB. We are, I, I think that agency can nominate eight and there, I think there's twenty agencies presenting, so. Okay, odds, but, uh, we've got a good presentation. We've got a good story of what we do. Um, and so hopefully we'll get that award and be coming back to Council to decide how we want to allocate those funds uh, throughout the city and put together a work plan. So that's, that was it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff members this evening? I'm going to back up one notch in our, uh, agenda. And since he's the esteemed individual of Benton REA, I'm going to recognize Buddy Treadwell.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I was just playing around with that raised hand. I saw it up there. I was trying to get it, get it to lore. So I have no, no important information for you.
Well, you can, I, I saw somebody today when I was on a Zoom meeting, there was two hands. They couldn't figure out if they were raising a hand or they were waving, so. You're always, you're always welcome to speak in front of us, buddy. And with that, I'm going to again thank Benton REA for, uh, for their partnership. And we look so forward to many more years of, uh, cooperation, collaboration, as well as that communication. Because the communication aspect up is the number one, uh, thing that makes cooperative way successful. So thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies. We appreciate everything you do for us. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting at seven oh three this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.